Yes.
Hey.
Chris.
Howdy. I'm really hoping you don't need me today. Is Jalen here?
Jalen, uh, yeah, she dropped off her stuff. She should be back.
Alright.
Are you up?
Yeah.
Good.
Sorry I'm late.
You got stuff going on?
Yeah.
Gonna run to the bathroom.
Sounds like fun.
We got the cor-.
Yes. So, what was the vote last night on advertising? Cause I gotta go. Back to math some work on that. No advertisement?
They rescinded it.
They rescinded it?
Great, that's less work for me. So, library as well?
Yep.
Okay. So, library as well?
Yep.
Nobody here knows about wildfire or anything? There? If they went for it?
Uh...
I'll go ask Diana.
What's for what?
Tax increase.
Ooh, no, I don't know.
Okay.
They didn't mention anything like that too.
Fire.
I don't know, um...
Yeah, I'm, uh, what's so, uh... Castle Valley fire.
Those are the only ones that are confirmed.
Mosquito dropped out and, uh...
I'll go see if Diana knows about wildfire. Okay. Well, I'm gonna skip out on this meeting, but if you guys need me for any reason, I'm over in my office, but... Gotta focus on the tax bill today.
Good luck!
Yeah.
I've, uh, got a quorum on the, the BAP. You ready, Ruth?
I've got a quorum on both.
Okay, and I call the special meeting of the joint Grand County Council and Budget Advisory Board. Meeting to order is Wednesday, October 17th. And it is 8:34. President Zach Cheswick, Terry Morris, Chris Barrett, Evan Clapper, Jalen Hawks, Curtis Wells, and Ruth Dillon are secretary. Let's see, first up is approving the minutes for, uh, the last meeting, October 9th. Anybody reading?
Yes. But I didn't bring them with me. I moved to approve the minutes from last week.
On October 9th?
So, except...
Sure, second down.
Anybody have any discussion or corrections?
I had a couple of, uh, questions, but... They're kind of friendly. They wanna drag me. This Chris always has everything on.
I can find it, I can get it back. I don't have any response to ya.
Love for Ruth there, wow.
He searched for Ruth.
Where, um, let's see, when did you send those out, Ruth? It was...
Well, I think, I do remember one question. It was about... Oh, good. Yeah.
She said it one day. Dead service over to you.
Hang on, it's highlighted. I'm making a error. Oh, okay, when was impact fees?
I can't find it. My brain's not working. Too many emails from Ruth.
Joint Council Budget, isn't that it?
Well... Uh, that, this one says, uh... October 4th. We need to want it for the 9th.
So, this says, Chris, this is on impact fees, unbalances. Chairperson Baird stated that eligible projects for collecting impact fees include law enforcement, roads, drainage, drainage project. What kinds of projects would law enforcement be able to impact fees?
Uh, they're building.
They're building, okay.
Uh, yeah.
Is that how we're paying for the jail?
Nope. Can't do impact fees for jails. Not allowed, I don't think.
And that's actually in our impact fee plan, is Sheriff's Building?
Mm-hmm.
And then the other was... Oh, I'm just curious about all the airport disasters. Could that be... Full T... Design?
You mean on the, on taxiway?
Yeah.
I think it was more heat related, similar when the red started forming. That's why I'm just...
Yeah, a certain climate we live in. I just, it's curious that everything's...
It's the mega shell out there that will swallow the air itself.
I remember the big controversy when they moved the airport out from, uh, Spanish Valley into the... There was a big controversy on having it put there because of the issues that would be consistently happening at the airport's runway due to the mega shell. It was not like...
Yeah, I know, I know. That's, uh, why it's like a roller coaster ride on ice.
Well, they had to remove, like, five feet and then start road basing from there, huh?
So, it was probably a poor decision in the late 60s that we were stuck doing like that.
Anyway, that was just a curiosity.
Alright, any corrections? Other corrections or anything on the minutes? Now, I'll, I'll call the vote. This is for the Budget Advisory Board member.
Well, actually, it's a joint meeting. I think they... There's joint minutes.
Oh, I guess so, yeah. I mean, we could all vote on the minutes. I mean, the budget itself will get transferred to the council in November. Uh, everybody that's in favor, raise your hand. Anybody opposed? So, how many is that? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine in favor? Passes. Alright, first up, um, this is, uh, just some leftover business, I guess. Maybe more for the Budget Advisory Board. I thought I got my thing up here. Didn't make it on. Computer's kinda slow, I can't call it. Just to cover emergency management, which, uh... Slightly complicated. There's a couple different revenue streams for it. There's the, uh, 911 surcharge or 911 tax and pay on your phone bill. And also, we have a pretty significant, uh, Homeland Security grant. It's got a three-year performance period. It's about $1,032,000, but I think we're expending on spending all of that next year. So, first off, we'll just go over real quick the... Emergency management that's in the, um, general fund. So, this is, uh, where part of Rick's, Rick's, uh, salary is split up between the 911 fund and the general fund. So, this is his, this portion of it is his, it's in the general fund. And, uh... As you can see, there's quite a bit of radio stuff, um, all kinds of... You know, constantly busy and traveling all over the place, working on, um, fixing and improving the radio system. And so, if we go into, uh... Miscellaneous grants, which is Fund 25. We can see the revenue coming in. It's called WMD grant, I guess. I don't know if it used to be called... I don't, I don't know if that means weapons of mass destruction or something, but, um... That's not the name of the grant really anymore. It's a, uh, Homeland Security grant, uh, total of $232,000 coming in. And then, uh, the same amount going out on the expense side for, uh, a whole bunch of different radio stuff. So, Rick's planning on spending that all next year. And there's also... 911 emergency funds. This is the fund that... We use to expend the taxes, surcharge. It's, uh, restricted money, which is why it's its, its own fund. And so, it's hard to, it's one of those ones we kinda have to predict. Last year, we brought in about $110,000. And this year, we're up to, uh, almost $90,000 in revenue. And so, I think we're gonna, we've already surpassed the budget on that. So, I'm kinda expecting similar this year to last year, $110,000, also budgeting $110,000 for next year. And again, as I said, this is the other portion of Rick's salary and benefits here. And, uh, some more of the expenses associated with, um... Communication systems. So, Rick just got this in plugged in, so we're... Like, he says he feels pretty comfortable with it. I don't really know enough about it to say one way or the other, but... Anybody have any questions on how the money side works for emergency management? And the 911?
I just, like, for anybody who can give me this kind of a big picture. There's emergency management, there's, um, sheriff, there's EMS, and they all participate in this dispatch. Does this have anything to do with dispatch? And if so, the meetings that are happening, the meeting that happened and is going to happen again on the 7th, is this gonna change all of this, I wonder?
It does. Sometimes it has to do with dispatch equipment, obviously.
Yes, it does.
And so, the, you know, there's a, some turmoil, I guess, between the city and, uh, county on... On the matter. I, you know... I don't know what to do about, about it, but, um, there's some desire to... Establish digital communication, which works well for, you know, the majority of the areas, but it doesn't work in canyons. And a lot of backcountry around here, so you still have to rely on the more old-fashioned technology, but, um...
So, would it be important to sheriff and EMS to not go to the digital?
No, not necessarily. I mean, uh, digital is, like I say, it's useful for, uh... The valley and the spaces where, you know, you can get the digital signal. But, uh, that, like I say, it doesn't work for a lot of the more backcountry locations around here. It doesn't get into canyons. And so, you need, you know, all the different repeater stations around the county, uh, to really get into all the nooks and crannies, which we don't entirely cover, obviously, but, um... Um, I, I talk to both sides. I talk to the city police and the sheriff because I like what's going on, because I heard the same thing. And both of them have good things and bad things about each one, so I don't really know what would be the best. I think the best thing to do is have them come in and talk to us about it. So, yeah, I mean, it would end up being a mix. You couldn't just go 100% digital. You still have to use, uh, radio signals and so, uh...
Chris, his phone line expenses every, is it consistently $2,500 under budget?
Hmm, let's see here. Looks like it is. Well, there's one where it went up to 32.
Oh, okay.
Rick Sahar got it nailed down to get in to go over stuff. Took me quite a while just to get him to look at the numbers.
It's not a ton of money, but just...
Yeah, and this is in the 911, so... Since it's its own fund, you know, I'm a little less, uh, worried about these isolated funds if they're... If the money's not spent, it just rolls back over and goes right back into the same thing over again, doesn't affect anybody else's budget or any other department's budget. And so, it's not, it's not the same as trying to budget for the general fund where if somebody's got too much money tied up in one line item, it's gonna affect everybody else. This one is all self-contained and really is just whatever Rick's working on.
Okay.
So, it's, like I say, it's not a huge consequence to the rest of the county or any real... But he did send me... Let me see if I can just bring it up real quick. I'm not leaving, I'm just coming over.
So, he doesn't have to turn around?
You had enough. I was trying to kick you out.
I'm gonna have to...
You're out. Did that make you mad?
That wasn't the answer I wanted, so I'm good.
Here's his list of, uh... He has prioritized kind of which list of different capital, you know, stuff he wants to work on. So, uh, the microwave tower replacement is, looks like his, uh, highest priority. You can see these other things, operations trailer, uh, willow microwave replacement. Batteries, base station, Connex storage, a lot, a lot of stuff I don't even know what is.
He's getting a Connex, huh?
I don't even, what is a Connex?
Not just one, he's getting two. One of those, uh, those shipping containers.
Sure, that's what I have, I have the emergency operations.
People buy them because they're pretty much bulletproof and, and, uh, it's just like a storage shed.
So, yeah, this is the list of all the stuff he's got prioritized here, so I assume with, uh... Hit, you know, he'll spend this as he gets the money, depending on which is the higher priority for his capital there. And that's the list he sent me for, for all that stuff, so...
A drone.
Yeah, I assume, you know, that, that's for maybe checking out the radio towers instead of climbing up there. I don't know. I don't know. Maybe he just wants a drone.
Maybe flying. Because in this day and age, why wouldn't you?
Yeah. Okay, let's see here, so... Anybody have any other questions about the 911 fund or the emergency management? Alright, let's move on to miscellaneous grants. This is one that's... Sometimes complicated, um... There's a lot of them in here, a lot of line items in here that aren't, uh, used anymore because we set up, you know, once a grant goes its, uh, course, it, uh... It still stays in the system because we have to keep record of it, but the BLM Onion Creek Grant, this is a grant that, uh, got through the, uh, federal grant. It's actually $80,000, not $60,000. And, uh, Bill has been working this year on this grant. I think he said he spent $24,000. He may spend another 15,000. I think next year in August is when this grant is up, and so, I, I assume he's gonna wanna spend the full 80, uh... By next year.
Excuse me if I recall, believe it's a five-year grant?
Yeah, I just looked at, uh...
Is this...
Next year, I think, is, I saw, when I pulled the grant papers, it was, uh, ending actually next year.
Is this for the bridge up Onion Creek to Taylor's Ranch, or is it just for...
It's all, there's, they, they've done quite a few different improvements on that road.
Yeah, it's not just a bridge, it's fortifying, you know, the washouts, the washouts happen just by the way.
I mean, even, that's a lot, there's a lot of work to be done. It never gets done out there because it's such a... Gets washed out all the time, but, um, cooperative grant agreement with the BLM. Then, uh, again, we've got that Homeland Security grant we discussed. Um, then here's, uh, Tim Hicks', uh, biological weed control revenue. Um, it's not entirely predictable exactly how much he's going to bring in. He's always working, and so, it's reimbursable, and so, uh... I think what Diana often does is put, you know, a higher figure in there. And then, when we get near the end of the year, we know how much it's gonna end up being, and we, and we modify it down to the actual. So, you can see that that happened, you know, in the past, and so... Miscellaneous grants is a line item that Diana oftentimes will plug in a revenue for grants that just pop up. And, uh, you know, as you're somewhat aware, as, as we go through the year, people find grant opportunities that weren't anticipated last year when we were budgeting. And so, um, Diana will oftentimes plug a big number in there, and then again, whatever we end up bringing in from unanticipated miscellaneous grants will, will amend the budget to the actual. But, you know, in, in order to, uh, be able to process those grants without opening the budget back up and having a public hearing and increasing the bottom line, you know, this is the, the kind of the, the way that you do it. You just budget that number and then modify it at the end of the year to come back down. Then, of course, there's the, the expense side of this. This, um, pedestrian mapping grant, uh... I think, um... Has been probably, we've received this grant a long time ago, and it's partly, uh, for the purposes of surveying unrecorded corners all across the county. I talked with Lucas Blake, the, uh, you know, the surveyor who, or the guy who will be surveyor, and he's interested in fulfilling this grant. And working on it, so part of this, uh, salary that I established for him, uh, could be paid for out of this grant amount of money here. Um, transferred, you know, over to the general fund to compensate Lucas for doing the work that's specific to this grant. And so, he was thinking over maybe two or three years, he would be able to hammer away at that and actually fulfill that grant, which has been around for a long, long time.
Chris, since you're in the clerk's office, would you just describe that, um, situat- that situation for us real quick? So, we've never had a surveyor, but how does that work?
Well, we did have a surveyor, uh, Tim Keo was a surveyor, uh, our last surveyor. And, uh, more or less, the way that it worked with Tim was that, you know, his, the surveyor's office was essentially his office, his personal office, which Lucas took over. And so, um... I'll just bring it up real quick. It's easier for me to show you the budget. We've, you know, we've, we already covered this, but, um...
Yeah, did you have those, uh, you had a summary of some statute that you recall from, I was presenting that, that had, uh, you know, where it said counties shall have surveyor or whatever?
Well, it doesn't say that they shall have a surveyor, but, um... If there is no surveyor, then some of the duties, um, fall on the recorder and some of them are just, you know, you have to contract out. And that's what we've always done, so... In talking with Lucas, uh, you know, there's the capacity that the council could, um... Work with him to do all of the county's survey work, which would be huge. And he says he doesn't wanna do that, when, you know, which would include the, like, the Spanish Valley Tribe, all the surveying for all of our projects that we do. And so, he didn't wanna do that. He was more interested in, you know, like, what, what we were discussing last night, monuments on political boundaries and, uh, just working on, uh... Creating a portion of our website that, uh, contained all the recorded plaids. And he's also got a lot of plaids that Tim, uh, has that aren't recorded because, uh... John over in the recorder's office told me that they only record a plat if there's a corner set. And if there's not a corner set, then they don't record it, and so, there's quite a few plaids that Keo had that he transferred over to Lucas. And he wants to scan all that, get it, uh, on the website, make it available to the public. Uh, if you go to San Juan County's website, you'll see that they have a fairly significant page for their surveyor, and it has a lot of good information. So, that's, that's something that he wants to do, but he's also interested, like I say, in working on, uh, just cleaning up monuments, boundaries, you know, working on any kind of issue that comes, comes up with regard to, uh... Political boundaries, et cetera, so... But anyway, uh, just to cover real quick this, $32,000 is a combination of what he was asking for to do, to kind of the fundamental surveyor work plus some of the work, um... For that GIS pedestrian grant. And then, we're paying him, he asked for, you know, $150 bucks a month for the use of his offices, you know, the surveyor's office. Or, uh, or no, actually, that was $250 a month and $150 a month for, um, office expenses and supplies. He initially asked for money for a large format scanner, but we already budgeted for that in the recorder's office, and so, I was like, well, you, you can use the one that we're gonna get in the recorder's office. And John said that was alright, so we axed the request for a large format scanner.
Curtis, I think, uh, back to just some more about the position. It was my understanding that the counties have the ability to, um, combine the surveyor with the recorder. But when the last surveyor retired or stepped out, whatever, that that process never happened, so that just by default fell to, um, the recorder. And so, it's technically been a vacant position, and so, he's able to step in, but it's, uh, it's actually like a midterm election, isn't it? It's like...
Well, yeah, I mean, it's, it is, I think there really is only two years left on that particular surveyor term, um... And of course, if it's vacant, you can apply to run for it, you know, any year that it's vacant, I suppose, but, um... I think that the surveyors on a cycle that really only has two more years left in a term. But, I don't know, I mean, probably should have consolidated that office a long time ago, but it never happened.
The term?
Four years.
Four years?
But it should be staggered. Um, I'll have to check, you know, when the... I'm pretty sure that it's, it is midterm for that.
But to consolidate it, it has to be on the cycle when it would come up, not like...
Well, I mean, the council could consolidate it, um... Even if somebody's in there, but they'd have to wait until the term's over, which would be essentially kicking him out, you know?
Yeah.
Kicking him out of office. But, I don't know. I mean, I, I suppose that would be a decision to be made after you find out what the value of the position is, you know? Might end up feeling like after a couple of years that it is a valuable position to have.
Just, uh, in the past, I had talked with our recorder about it, and he, he was not at all comfortable having the position, um, consolidated with his position. And he, and my, my recollection of his explanation was that the position, the surveyor, has to be licensed, and our recorder is not licensed.
No, that's not true.
I'm, I'm just saying, what he said to me, which is why I never moved forward. And there was an attempt to make me move forward.
The law is very clear that it says if the office is consolidated with the recorder, that the recorder does not have to be a licensed surveyor, and that they can just contract it out. So, that's not really an issue. I mean, you might be concerned about it, but it's not a realistic concern.
And this pretty much maxes, or goes a little over that grant amount?
Well, the component, so twenty-four thousand was what he was looking for, for just the regular surveyor part. And then we tagged another eight thousand on to cover what he would be working on for the GIS pedestrian stuff. And so, you know, it would be, he was thinking over a course of a few or several years getting that grant fulfilled, but that's how we kind of came up with it.
So just to clarify, as things stand now, he either has to run for reelection in like another year and a half, or we have to decide to consolidate the two offices?
I think so. I'm not exactly sure. I have to double check on the term, but I'm pretty sure it's midterm for that position.
So it's all the twenty-twenty cycle?
The presidential, yeah.
Okay.
So then also in the expense side for the biological weed control is where we have some of Tim Hicks' employees. So we've got some of the employees that, I mean, these are changing really fast, but some of those employees are accounted for in this grant, miscellaneous grant fund associated with biological weed control. And so that's where some of his employees are not in the general fund. And most of the rest of these are retired. Yep. So you can see we've had quite a few over the years, but the active ones we just went And so finally start to get, hopefully get this one, because that money's been carried over every year for like twenty-five years.
Does this software have the capacity to hide grants that haven't been used for years?
I think so, as long as...
I didn't have to. Just wondering.
I can hide the ones that are all zeros, but then they have to go, they have to be all zeros going all the way back five years, which, you know, some of them can get hidden, but not all. So anyway, that's all that's happening with miscellaneous grants at the moment, anyway. And let's see, gonna have to postpone Family Support Center again. We'll get, you know, we'll get that done eventually, but Sherilyn, Diana, well, Diana really has been doing that budget forever. I haven't really even hardly crossed paths with Diana. Sam Flath's contribution to other agencies, I think that this was brought up in the last meeting maybe by Chris Kaufman, is that right? So about, you know, reevaluating whether or not Sam Flath's as an enterprise fund is contributing enough to, you know, to their, to the general fund for the services. So the clerk's office does all the bookkeeping, accounting, cash receipting, and Sam Flath's pays five thousand a year into that. And Sam Flath's also pays ten thousand a year to search and rescue. So I guess the question, you know, would be how the, how do we feel? Is that enough or, you know, should we increase Sam Flath's contribution?
Was there any word from Andrea about that?
I think Chris Kaufman said they're willing to pay.
Yeah.
Right now, that's four hundred and sixteen a month. Do you ask an employee in the clerk's office to believe that's enough?
Well, you can see, I mean, they're...
I mean, they're a huge operation.
We're budgeting for next year six hundred and forty thousand and the clerk's office processes every penny of that. So it's pretty significant. You would think that's an organization, or like a business that, that was about a six hundred and forty thousand dollar a year business would pay more than five thousand a year in, you know, accounting.
I would say at least double it, but I know Chris Kaufman's vision was to up it by ten thousand and that would take care of the audit committee requirements offset.
Oh, yeah.
By a second, increase it to ten thousand. Double it.
Doubling it would increase it to ten thousand. Upping it by ten thousand would increase it to fifteen thousand.
I think he suggested that.
He suggested both.
I don't know. Sam Flath has definitely been growing every year for many years and I think it's been a lot of years since the, you know, I think it's been at five thousand for probably a decade or longer.
Any idea what that would cost if they, with the private for their bookkeeping? I have no idea. I've never, yeah, never tried to farm out six hundred and forty thousand dollars worth of accounting. I mean, it's a lot every single day, you know? We get their money and count it, process all their invoices.
That's a daily thing going through the...
Yeah, they bring in the money, you know, bags of money and they count it also, but we double count it, you know, and then put it into the accounting software and process all of their invoices and everything, so.
What about asking them for another ten thousand dollars and see what they say?
Could do that. Of course, the council doesn't have to ask.
I understand, but, you know, they have a pretty big mandate up there to take care of that place and police call. I don't know if you like.
Well, I would think that, you know, ten thousand's probably not too much. I don't know, fifteen thousand is...
How many, do you have a bill for about, I mean, is it like an hour a day that you could spend, a couple a week?
Um, yeah, between accounts receivable and accounts payable, maybe an hour each or down. I mean, that may be more, it depends on how much. I mean, if you get, I guess part of the issue with accounts receivable is this is a lot of cash and change and stuff, it's hard to count it.
You're recommending increase it to ten thousand?
I think that would be fair.
I think that's what we should do then.
Up to ten. And, you know, their contribution to search and rescue is also ten.
Search and rescue is doing pretty well, aren't they, Jim? They're spending more money?
Oh, you mean like in terms of donations?
Yeah.
Well, not nearly enough to cover the expense of search and rescue by any means.
Oh, really?
No.
I don't know why.
Search and rescue is, you know, yeah, it's over a two hundred thousand dollar a year operation. We don't got anywhere near that much in the donations. I mean, they are going to put a donation link, I think, on the, one of the travel council brochures instead of a, or they may have already done it, instead of a page where you can make donations over the internet.
What's the county's contribution to search and rescue?
TRT, W E S T R T.
We offset some of it, yeah. So it's all mixed in with the sheriff's budget, so it gets a little hard to, I have to like add it all up, but we have the search and rescue salaries, a hundred and twenty-three And search and rescue benefits, there's capital costs. It's a little hard to really break out because it's not its own department, it's all mixed in with the sheriff's budget.
Sherri, you don't know how lucky you are to be able to sit down and do this. You shouldn't have gone through what we went through last year.
I agree.
Seriously.
We've got search and rescue, capital, ten thousand, search and rescue inventory, search and rescue billing contract. Like I said, I mean, it's, I did, let's see, in the past Diana's budgeted over ten hundred thousand to come in from TRT, but I think that I budgeted, what I added up was a little less than that. But she may be aware of some of these line items that I'm on in terms of what gets coded to them, but it's considerably more in expense than donations and so they're not by any means, you know, funded by donations.
So they're not in a position to up their, wait, what we were just discussing for Sam Flath's to up their contribution to search and rescue?
So yes, Sam Flath contributes ten thousand right now.
Are they in a position to up their contribution to search and rescue?
Well, with the, I think, you know, I kind of felt like Andrea's revenue projection was pretty conservative. I think I had a revenue projection that was about forty thousand more than what she had, but I, we budgeted hers, which is this six hundred and forty-nine thousand, with the proposed salary increase, which, let's go over here and see how much that is. They will appear to be, so their salary adjustment will be a total of around forty thousand. And that's including benefits and increase in health, cost of health insurance. And so they will be looking like, like they're going to be in the red, but I think that their revenue projection is, like I said, too conservative, but, you know, because I trended it and they've had a, if we go into this revenue here, you look, you'll see that over the years, they've budgeted for considerably less than they get. So twenty thirteen, they budgeted three forty, well, this, they were pretty close that year, but in twenty fourteen, they budgeted three sixty, went up to three eighty-six, four hundred, four thirteen, five thirty-three, five seventy-six, five seventy, six thirteen. So I'd say that, you know, Andrea historically has budgeted pretty conservatively on the revenue, which is okay. I mean, you don't want to necessarily, because if you're basing your expenses off your revenue and you could get in trouble. But I do think that, you know, they probably would bring in more than that, but who knows? But they've got a fairly healthy fund balance, too, that they can draw up and they've got all kinds of leeway.
What is your fund balance?
Go and see, did I bring up the fund balance?
They do have some...
Six hundred and eighty-one thousand at the beginning of the year. I'm not sure, they may have spent some of that in capital projects, but...
And there are a couple of big projects for next year that are going to come out of the fund balance, right? Campsite.
For match money.
Yeah. So, yeah, but, you know, obviously increasing the campsites is going to increase the revenue too, so, yeah. I don't know. I mean, I would say that I wouldn't necessarily feel compelled to increase the search and rescue unless I got some more statistics about how much work they do up there, which is probably a lot, but I don't know. But, you know, trying to figure out where to squeeze five thousand dollars, you know, you don't want, we don't need to necessarily spend a huge amount of time on that, it's not going to make that much difference.
Yeah.
But, you know, I would say that probably upping the contribution for the administrative stuff is, you know, justifiable. And I guess I could look in, you know, next year, I could look in to see what it would cost a business of that size to secure accounting. It's probably, it would probably be more than that really, because we're talking also about payroll.
Yeah.
And all that kind of stuff, HR, payroll, the whole, the whole nine yards, so.
I mean, I don't want it to be like a moneymaker off of Sam Flath's for the county, but it, I also don't want it to be a ridiculous, like, you know, giving it away.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. So they made that change.
So that was ten thousand for clerk auditor services?
Yeah, ten thousand for, I don't know that you want to call it clerk auditor, but it's called accounting bookkeeping in the software. And that is performance clerk auditor. And then...
And then how does that work, Chris? Would you just bill it once a month or divide that amount by twelve?
I think we just do a journal or just a transfer once a year for it. Next up, somebody, was it you, Mary, that asked to talk about the Moab Valley Fire Protection District?
Well, because our MOU is unclear, but it's either up on January or April and we need to decide what we want to do. We were pretty generous last year on what were contributions to the Moab Fire Department and I still don't think they have proven that they really need that much help from us. And also I think we, there's other ways to get revenue, especially they haven't even, they don't even bill insurance company, you know, auto insurance. I've talked to State Farm and Allstate and they say, yeah, other counties, other places charge, you know, they ask for reimbursement and we're not doing that. And I just, yeah.
Is that through the county offices or through the department?
That's what the problem is. They, that's what TJ said last night, was that they can't bill, correct? Is that how you understood?
That's what he said.
But I, I don't know.
No, he didn't say they couldn't, he didn't.
He said, we're not billing it.
Yeah.
Well, that's what he was told several years ago.
But I, you know, so that's one thing we need to look at. I know Andy says they shouldn't take over the extrication, but, I mean, most, most counties, search, EMTs and fire departments are combined. I mean, we're unusual that way and it seems like, but I think, and for the, you know, both he and, and Cor, and a fellow did this, where they're like, well, if we don't go outside the county, well, if they don't respond to those calls, they're going to lose fifty percent of their volunteers, because they're already, we've gotten so good with our fire retention, they're not, they don't get many calls and so volunteers get bored. They go to all that training and then they don't get to use their training. And, you know, they're having a hard time keeping volunteers. So that threat that we'll stop going outside the district if we don't get money would cut their own noses off. But anyway, short story, I mean, I think we, with the MOU coming up, we've got to decide what we want to do. Are we going to continue funding, supplementing the fire department district at this level?
It's, I was really impressed with TJ and happy because it's an entirely different tone.
Yeah, it was a much better tone.
Discussions were last year and it was... The discussions were last year, and it was disappointing that it came to a point where basically I felt like that's what the district chief was saying last year, was pay up, or we're gonna stop responding to calls outside the district. And it was disappointing that it, you know, boiled up to that point and broken down to that point. But, um, I heard TJ say that the insurance company told him that they couldn't collect reimbursements because they weren't a billing agency. And I would like to better understand why. There's, in some sense, I feel like there's some tribalism that's going on. You know, and sometimes it's with us in the city, and sometimes it's with these, these...
Different agencies.
Different agencies. And like, you know, so that frame of reference, I didn't know that, but, you know, that EMS and fire is combined in a lot of communities. Like, I'd like those things to be examined on their merit as opposed to these personality conflicts where people don't come to the table and work them out, and it results to us having to spend more money. And so the MOU, we had, on that subject, where we left that was, we had upped our contribution last year, um, to, to more or less get square with the complaint that we hadn't been paying our fair share for a long time. And I would have to say that, that didn't seem like that was the response from the previous fire chief, that, you know, I guess I would say it had come across that he felt like it was satisfactory. But anyways, we had talked about an MOU that was like a per, per response, like...
And that's what we did, up to a hundred thousand, wasn't it?
Capped it at a hundred thousand?
Uh, here it is right here. Uh, it's eighteen hundred per incident with a cap of a hundred thousand, but also a minimum of fifteen thousand.
That's like, how much, can we go back? 'Cause I think, like, we've almost, we've over-doubled what we've, over the last couple years, given to the Moab Valley.
Oh, yeah. We, yeah, I mean, I think, uh, we did increase it, but I don't know that, it's hard for me to say how much their costs are for responding, whether eighteen hundred per incident is...
And we've never gotten a good, clear answer on that.
We asked them that over and over, and it was...
Well, here's our numbers.
So here's, here's my issue. It's been an issue since we first started having these discussions, when the old fire chief came to us and said, you know, I mean, the, the end of the conversation was, "We need to charge you per incident." We asked him, "How do you come up with that number?" And basically took his whole budget and divided it by the number of incidents. And A, we don't know how many incidents they're gonna have in any given year, but B, I think that's a faulty way to do it, particularly since they're volunteers. He's not hiring new people with that money. He's, um, included all of their buildings, capital, you know, everything was put in that budget that shouldn't be in there for man-hours just to go out to a call. So I think eighteen hundred is way too much, and I, I still feel uneasy about double taxing taxpayers.
And, and you think about, they're gonna have to have so much equipment, so many buildings, everything's gonna have to be there, whether or not they're responding to things outside the district. That's not gonna change if they stop responding to the district. They still have to have the same amount of equipment.
Well, why don't we work with TJ to come up with a real number?
Yeah, that's what we need to do, is revisit.
The other thing is, why don't we, why don't we try and ascertain why they can't be a billing agency and actually build insurance companies?
Yeah, 'cause that seems really...
They're billing us.
They're billing us.
Yeah, and, you know, that seems to be a no-brainer for me.
So I guess what we need to do is come up with maybe, uh, someone that will be a, work with TJ.
Well, don't, don't forget about the possibility, or give up on the possibility of either them expanding their district, investigating whether or not that's gonna impact their ISO for real, 'cause I don't know that that's necessarily true.
That's what us...
Well, but the, but the second thing would be to consider, you know, making good use of, you know, like the Thompson Springs fire, you know, unless you're gonna just get rid of that, or I don't know what, but you could take that, recharter it, expand it to include everything except for, uh, Moab Valley Fire, and, you know, or use it to establish a, uh, a fee for fire that you'd collect from everybody, or, uh, I mean, it would be much more labor-intensive, but you could also establish as a taxing entity. But, you know, I'm just trying to figure out a way to not do the double taxation thing, where we're using property taxes that the people in the city are paying to us and to Moab Valley Fire, you know? So if, I guess the idea would be to collect the revenue just from the people that are outside the Moab Valley Fire District to pay for services. And so it wouldn't have to be a fire department, it would just be a fire district, and all you would, all we would do is, you know, bring in revenues.
Collect revenue.
Use it to pay on a contract with Moab Valley Fire.
That's, we've explored somewhat, and we, that seems like there is like railroad and pipelines and, uh, different entities out there that aren't paying taxes to fire, not that that's who we'd be responding to, but we could get a healthy chunk, I think.
Well, if there was private property, that's, we would be responding to it. I mean, the county is responsible to, for fire control on private property.
So...
And so that's, uh, the other one, uh, is this Lower Valley Fire, so we, uh, have an agreement with the fire over in, uh, Fruta, west water area.
We give ten, ten thousand a year.
So, yeah, it used to be seven, then went up to ten. And, uh, so I kind of calculated that over the course of that agreement, we've paid about a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. I'm not aware of it, of that responding to any incidents. There was one incident out there in two thousand and twelve, I guess, that Ruth dug up, that was just outside of the agreement area, and they billed us thirteen thousand more in.
On top of...
On top of the ten?
Because it was outside of the agreement area. And so, you know, I guess that's something to look into, too. Maybe we should contact Lower Valley Fire and say, you know, we need to see what, uh, the responses have been as a part of this agreement. It's pretty sparsely populated, and, uh...
Basically, it was just a freeway coverage.
Yeah, and so...
That's all it was.
Anyway, uh, I don't know if ten thousand isn't an appropriate figure for that one either, and maybe we should renegotiate it as a per-incident agreement.
They, they, they responded to the Danish Flat Fire this year.
There was a fire out there.
Oh, yeah. It was explosion.
Okay.
Explosion, and then, uh, some guys were hurt. And, uh, yeah, they, they responded, and Thompson responded, and Moab responded.
Was that in the agreement district of...
Well, it was a big deal, but, but, but the fire departments have cooperative agreements with each other, so...
In this case, it's actually through the emergency management, it's not the fire district. I talked with TJ about it, and he's, he's all in favor and feels like we should still have that agreement, and that ten thousand is fair, was his point of view, but he did say, you know, emergency management used to be contracted with Corky when Corky was the fire chief, so it was, it was always sitting over there in the fire district, but it was confusing. But emergency management, of course, is very failing, and the sheriff's office...
Well, can we send a letter with, from emergency management requesting a record of responses or...
Write down, yeah.
But anyway, right now, because the contract, or the MOU actually, and this is just another thing to bring up, is that if, if you ever are trying to establish an agreement for, that involves money, you shouldn't do an MOU, you should do an agreement. MOUs are no good for money, financial matters.
So would we, rather than redoing an MOU, we should do an agreement?
I don't know. It might be to your advantage at this point, because if it's not an agreement, you can just say, "Never mind about that, we're not doing that anymore."
Yeah. It's not legally binding.
There's a ninety-day, you know, pause to get out of any time.
Well, that may be the case, but you can't enforce an MOU. You can pull out of an MOU anytime you want. There's no, it's not an agreement, and that's the whole point of an MOU, is that it's not...
Just an understanding, like a, a formal handshake.
And so, I mean, if you want to be nice, then you'll give ninety days, but you don't have to, you know, nobody, it's just not a binding contract. But really, I mean, if you do enter into financial agreements, it should be, uh, a real agreement, a contract. This isn't that. But for now, I budgeted a hundred thousand because that's the, the maximum that's in the agreement.
And that's actually an MOU also?
Huh?
This is the fire protection district, it's actually just an MOU.
Yeah.
That's what I said, yeah.
Okay, I got you.
That's what I was talking about.
I thought you were talking about Lower Valley, sorry.
I don't know about Lower Valley, but this one is an MOU, which just, like I said, it's, it's not typical to u, to use an MOU for money, financial agreements. So I don't know. I think that we kind of have the budget for it, if, as long as we're rolling with this. If it changes, we can, you know...
Well, I think you need to budget for it, but, but, you know, beyond that, I think that the, the decision has to be made to figure out whether you want to do a per-incident and, and, uh, you know, how you want to put it into an agreement if you do.
So, yeah, for this, the way this MOU reads, it's eighteen hundred per incident, but there is a minimum of fifty, so this, thus far, we've, uh, paid out, I think, about forty-six thousand five hundred, so we're pretty close to that minimum.
So I would like to scratch this and...
Scratch the hundred thousand?
Yeah, scratch this MOU and throw it in the trash. And, um, TJ told me last night that they're planning for the forty-eight thousand, what he told me.
I have her forty-eight.
Yeah, as a contribution, so I don't know what reference that is. Is that like a previous year's contribution or something?
No, in previous years, we only gave them ten.
Yeah, we, we really up...
So the number he had, you know, was forty-eight, so I would, I would probably, my recommendation would be just to budget for the minimum and indicate to them that's what we're budgeting, and then do this work to, you know, to revisit a, a better agreement. But I don't, my ten cents is to wipe the slate clean with that MOU. It's, it's, it's not, like Chris is saying, it's not even legally binding anyways, and it, it's not a good agreement, I don't think, especially if it's based on, you know...
Bad numbers.
Yeah, bad numbers, yeah.
It was, it was, it was one, you know...
And it doesn't address our mess in Thompson either.
No.
I also feel like they were clearly told that, yeah, we're gonna make this contribution, but meanwhile, get this district thing worked out, or come up with another solution, because this isn't equitable.
Yeah, that, that's right.
And there have been no steps that I can see towards that.
And it's frustrating to me, 'cause clearly we've got a problem, and we've got to get some puzzle pieces fitting together, and like, why are we, why are we getting there? You know, why isn't the conversation enhancing?
Well, so, I, you know, do we want to meet with, uh, you know, the fire commissioners and, uh, TJ?
Well, I think, I think TJ's, uh, accepting of opportunities for improvement and, and willing to look into those, and I, I took that away from his words last night, so I think we should just engage with him and give, you know, get to work.
Well, ideally, they're to expand their district.
So just budget for fifty, is what we're saying?
That, that would be my recommendation.
Tell them that we're only budgeting for fifty for next year?
Yeah, not even only, but, but that that's an, you know, an, an increase from years past, and not even mention that it's the minimum on the MOU, but I don't want to take a conversation ahead of them in the hallway and, and make it out to be, you know, public record, although it's too late for that, but I'm positive, he told me forty-eight thousand is what they're planning for, but we should follow up with them and, and check, but if that is the case, then...
Well, that's almost how much they've already, we've already paid, so we paid forty-six thousand eight hundred.
So that's what he's referring to?
That includes January, February, March, and this agreement didn't start till April. But we have, they billed as if, sorry, they billed as if that agreement started January first, but it didn't.
So the whole thing's a mess.
Yeah. I, I don't know. So I better put it down to fifty then, for next year?
That's my recommendation.
Well, if that's truly a hardship, and we're not paying our fair share, then that might give incentive to go ahead and work with the district.
I'm okay with this. I need to, I need to bring up the fact, too, that Casa Valley is also doing stuff out of their district that I personally been on, and they're not billing the county at all, okay?
Amen.
We're, we're, we're covering everything east of the, up the river, here up to Cisco, and we're going up into Willow Basin and the North Slope and all that area up in there. And, uh, we're, we're, we're not billing the county for anything, okay? Well, thank you for that.
And that's how it should be. It's been that way until all of a sudden somebody decided, got it in their hat, that that was what they should do.
I spent, I spent a lot of, lot of time dealing with the, with, uh, Phil, and he was very deceptive. He didn't want to tell me what kind of, uh, uh, incidences they were ruling on, where they were, was very, very deceptive.
I would be careful, be careful, be careful what you're saying in a public meeting and recording.
I won't again.
All right, guys, time to talk about fire.
Enough fire talk, so where did we leave the MOU? Is it, do we need to...
Uh, I'd say if they were billing from January, that that would mean that it's ending in January, and that, um, we'll kind of settle up for this year and then January first.
Start over.
Yeah.
We don't have an MOU on January first.
We could start, you know, before January first, just communicate to them now that we're not looking to renew that agreement and to start proactively planning for a new arrangement, not necessarily agreement, but a new arrangement. And for the, you know, like you're saying, Chris, ideally they'll expand their boundaries, whatever we decide is the best avenue that we should go, we should all get on board and, and position that way.
Well, maybe TJ is open to expanding the district's boundaries, and so that would be, uh, something to discuss, and if, um, I, you know, I can see why they wouldn't want to if it really does affect the insurance rating inside of the existing district, but I, I don't know that that's necessarily the truth, and I think that there are possibilities to tier the ISO rating.
You could also split your ISO rating in, in different areas.
That's what, yeah, that's what we're talking about. And so that would be something to investigate, because if they're willing to respond outside their district, then they may as well just expand it to include the areas that they're willing to respond to. That way, they can, uh, through the course of their property tax, bring in the revenue to cover the expense.
That was, that was, that was always my, my argument about expanding the current districts, was because you would bring in all the private property that you now responded to anyway for free, and that would generate money for your, additional money for your district, so...
Well, yeah, and out there, I mean, there's, um, quite a bit of, uh, property in centrally assessed, you know, that...
Very expensive property to buy.
So anyway, so I, for the record, I just dropped that down to fifty for next year. That'll help a little bit with the general fund expense side.
If you don't mind, I will make that communication to TJ.
So, yeah, I might want to...
Is it?
Talk about having some workshops to discuss different strategies.
Would, on that subject of Ruth sending this communication, would, would we rather send something on letterhead that's kind of an update of what we budgeted, but also kind of outlining some steps forward, um, to do some planning? And we're talking about workshops instead of just an email? So can you draft that up, Ruth? Because it's pretty big. We need to kind of roll up our sleeves on that.
So we're, we're fifty thousand still?
Okay, next up is, uh, my item for cleanup of refuse debris, junk, inoperable wreck, unregistered vehicle. and registered vehicles and the like.
I put that on there because, uh, I think it was you taught me, um, that if you want to do something, you got to put your money behind it when we were, when, first year we were in a budget meetings together. And I don't necessarily think it has to be a lot of money, but I do think we have to start looking at what we're going to do about certain, especially these abandoned properties that I don't know whose responsibility they are, but there are some abandoned properties I went and looked at that, you know, were...
Abandoned, like you mean, but are they, do not delinquent on their property taxes? Or they are?
There's, yeah, there's, and then some of them are just, anyway, it's something that as a county, we need to start figuring out how we're going to deal with some of these health and safety issues that face us and if we don't put some type of line item and money saying, yes, this is a priority, it's never, nothing's ever going to happen. Even, you know, I know we can, we can create a public pri- private partnership, like, we already got that, that's already, we're waiting for some information as far as how, through the, you know, through how to legally be able to reimburse some of our money and, and things of that nature, and it's in the works. If you have anything to add, but I, I think if we had a line item, even if it was only two thousand dollars, three thousand dollars or whatever, we need a beginning because otherwise, then we, then if we get the contributions, because I know I've had people come up to me and offer me a thousand dollars. I mean, there are people in this town willing to throw down big money to get some of these areas cleaned up, but we don't have any way of taking it and putting it into a line item.
So...
My recommendation is we create a line item, decide how much money we want to budget for it this year and while we get the, you know, the, how we could do a lien on a property so if they sell it and we've, you know, when we get those, you know, the committee officially started and such, once we have it started, we have a way to go ahead and forward.
So, we, we had a, this context for Terry and kind of reminder for the council, we updated our, this was when Chris was still on the council, our ordinance for junk and refuse and debris and kind of tightened that up and that's been a, a common complaint in Grand County is, um, these folks that have, you know, these massive scrap junk piles, where do their rights end and then the property values of their neighbors begin? And, uh, Joe Kingsley's kind of advocated for the issue for a long time and so we updated our ordinance, but never really followed up with any teeth or plan for a mechanism to bring people into compliance. And so, we had a gentleman come forward that's in the scrap business that reached out to Mary and myself and said, you know, I've got an idea on how to help the county clean this stuff up and, and then I can, you know, make some money and we just had a series of meetings with him just to understand what his ideas were and liked some of them and didn't like others, but what was, what I did like about it is, is he has relationships with, with many, if not most, of the owners that are non-compliant and they allow for him to access their property and take scrap off of it. And that's a, could be a more effective model to work out something like that with some, uh, work out something with someone like that than Big Brother knocking on your door. And so, we've just kind of, it kind of, I think, uh, uh, added some, some new motivation in discussions in Mary's cleanup committee and so we've had, been meeting with Caitlin and, um, a couple of meetings with Zachariah and who, what's the name, sorry, of our new planning and...
Kenny?
Kenny. And what we decided was that you've got this, this, this committee, kind of a nonprofit committee on the side that can collect donations, but really if we're serious about getting some of these, you know, non-conforming properties, uh, you know, to comply with ordinance, we're going to have to have some mechanism in the county to help, you know, remove this junk and be proactive, so the city's doing a similar thing right now, they just started. And we had sent Kenny and Caitlin over to talk to them to kind of understand exactly what it is their approach is and they're, they're working that out with Mona and it's taken a few meetings to, you know, to, to make some progress there, but our idea is to have a, an RFP, which has that gone out to legal yet?
I'm not familiar with that RFP.
I, I think Zachariah's working with the lawyer he works with.
Okay.
That's how he's...
So, the idea is to have an RFP that the county can send out to a local contractor and when we have a property that's, you know, non-compliant, we can, we can pay them to come in and, and clean it up and haul the scrap. So, obviously, we're going to have to budget for that, but you might disagree with me, Mary, but I feel like we're, we're really early on in the process and we're still kind of fine tuning exactly what we think it's going to cost and the approach and so, I guess I look at it two ways, I, I wouldn't have a number, you know, to recommend for it, but at the same time, if that's a priority of the council, we do need to start budgeting for it because what we essentially did was update the ordinance.
And even get higher, now we have a, a code enforcer, you know, through Zachariah's office, we never had that before either, so we are two steps ahead of where we were a year ago.
So, why don't you just take the fifty thousand dollars that you just saved and put it in as a line item on this?
Just as a placeholder for the year, I mean, if you're going to be making progress towards it, might as well have the money in there.
That's fine.
Okay.
Good idea, Terry.
I would have recommended a thousand dollars for a placeholder. Save the fifty.
Yeah, I mean, you know, on, on things like that...
A thousand dollars isn't going to clean up anything.
No, but it's a placeholder, it gives us time to work through.
No, but on the other hand, you know, with the money there, you might even get something done.
Well, I, I would say that we would because we're going to have an RFP through legal, I mean, I don't see why that shouldn't be done in the next month and so if there's money budgeted, you know, for that line item, we could hit the ground running on a cleanup process, you know, end of this year, early next year. And we're ready, we're, we're at the point where if we've got money, you know, we'll be ready to get this stuff cleaned up, so it's just a matter of, is it a, you know, is it a priority to us?
Okay, compromise with me, twenty-five thousand.
Forty-five, seventy-five.
Sorry, no compromise from my, my vote.
We're in a year where we're going to have to dip into the general fund, oh, not, yeah, into our rainy day fund, savings, whatever, already in a significant way and we just saved fifty thousand dollars and we're immediately trying to spend it?
Well, we're not...
We didn't really save it yet.
We're not really, we're not really trying to spend it, but it, it's, it's just a matter of, this is an unresolved issue for a long, long time and I feel like we are at a point where we're ready to go and, and, and to remind you, these aren't prob, these are properties where people are willing to part with their stuff in, in a lot of cases, but they don't have the funds to do so. But having an operation going and up and running, I think will help facilitate donations too because it's one of these things that we've sat around and talked about for so long that nobody really takes it serious.
And if we could show some action, boy, I think we could...
Yeah, you know, the thing about it is as well is that, that if, if the county takes a lead in it, um, and then solicits donations from, from private citizens to help, uh, um, defray some of the costs of it, you know, I, probably we would raise some of the money to get it done, I mean, I, I personally, I would donate to them, you know?
Well, I mean, it's amazing how many people are willing, we, we...
There are, but so...
So, there's more than fifty thousand, but you have a twenty-five as a placeholder.
Well, I, I don't think it hurts to budget it and then try it for a year and see what happens, you know, but, I, I mean, I'm, I'm easy, I just think you ought to put some money to it, get it going.
My, my straw vote is to budget the fifty thousand saved.
All right, so, if you were to, if you were to budget it...
It was freed up.
If you were to budget it, would we budget it out of planning and zoning as a code enforcement type thing or is that the department you want to budget it out of? Do you want to budget anything on the revenue side for donations?
Yeah, we should probably set a goal, even if it's just to revisit this next year and...
Just put five thousand bucks in there. Let's see.
As a goal for revenue?
Ten.
Uh, yeah, maybe you could raise ten, but I'd put five, be conservative.
I was going to be conservative and say ten.
Oh, now you want to be conservative?
And raise twenty.
Boy, you can do that too.
Yeah.
I'm a neophyte in this operation, so...
What, the knee fight?
The neophyte.
Oh.
But, yeah, I'm glad, I'm, I'm excited to just be, have it as a line item because we have been talking about this for four years.
She would have been happy with one thousand.
I suggested one thousand.
Well...
But, but just, you know, I can remember when the first budget time and then Chris said, uh, if you really want something to happen, you have to put money towards it, otherwise it just stays in that fluffy area up there.
Well, with, with that amount and where we're at, I do feel like we could have a, I mean, have a lot of junk cleaned up here from now.
So, what would, what would be a conservative guess on how much we can hold in donations? Five thousand?
Yeah.
Five is fine. Now, are we speaking as someone that doesn't live in oil? We calling this a county cleanup or Spanish valley?
It's a, I mean, it's a county, we've already, we've talked about Thompson and...
Yeah, it's could be county. Because we've already had somebody come here from Thompson that would like us to clean up some places up there.
Yeah, yeah. I've had, I've gotten a phone call from, from someone who lives, whose dad lives in Thompson and they, they've got a similar, you know, similar issue.
I think it has to be county.
Of course it does, yeah.
I mean, that's, we're budgeting the funds as a county. Then, then we need to have a way to look at other properties outside of the Spanish valley.
Yeah.
Agreed.
All right.
So, wait a minute, back up here, so what do you suggest we would ask to the map of the coming up?
I'm not sure.
So, we, we just need to...
We've already, we've already had one guy come in, you know, said there's problems in Thompson. So, we now are aware of the problem up there.
So, planning and zoning would just survey all of the non-compliant properties regardless of what town they're in? And we would have to come up with a priority list that was, you know, factored in, you know, different things, but we would just have to build a list and knock them out.
So, are we going to ask planning and zoning to do that work or...
Yeah.
Planning and zoning really doesn't look outside of Spanish valley?
Well, they're getting, it's code enforcement.
Forever, this county has been just based on complaints, once we get a complaint, then code enforcement goes out and deals with it, they don't literally go out and survey.
They don't look at stuff.
We're not staffed up enough for that because code enforcement is only one aspect of Caitlin's job, so, I mean, if you want to switch her job around to where that's all she does, that's, that would be, I mean, that even one person is not enough.
And I don't agree with that.
It's more or less a one-time deal, you know?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're asking, I mean, I could take, I could take, we're getting way off subject, but I could take a day off and drive around and go find the areas that are sore thumbs, uh, probably in the entire county. And so, we're not. Well, I realize the complaint-based system is, is there, I think we've got a good idea and if we're getting a complaint from Thompson, well, I don't really think that's a monumental task, you know, for staff, I mean, it's in their office, um, anyways, code enforcement, so this is, this is just part of the job.
Well, and just by setting up a line item to get it hap, to get it happening, sort of, uh, uh, doesn't nullify the complaint system, but it certainly works alongside it, um, and it's something that needs to have action taken on it, my question is just, who takes the action and, and how it's, um, how it's done? Give you a little history, um, we had a program like this out in Casa Valley and when Ivans was still in business, we had a Griggy's car crusher out there and we started crushing up cars because we really wanted junk cars. So, he crushed up a whole bunch of them and we did everything we could and Ivans picked up and left and the next day, one of the guys that we cleaned up his property brought in another junk car.
Making roof, he needed some roof for junk.
Okay, so we're donating money to that line now?
All right, yeah, you got to remember that, this is just the budget.
Just remember this when we're trying to cut corners because we have to dip into so much savings. We can't rebuild it.
You could have voted differently last night, TJ.
All right, so...
I have no regrets.
So, moving on to, uh...
Oh.
Moving on.
Strategies.
So, now, uh, I'm going to kind of go back to the spreadsheet that we built last time. So, I mean, the first question that I, that I'll ask is, what do we want to do about stormwater contribution for next year? Right now, it's got a hundred thousand budgeted and we discussed upping that to four hundred thousand, which would be, you know, roughly how much it would, it would take to probably get a decent match together. So, that's a question there, is what do we want to do about stormwater for next year?
I would still like to see a project, um, happen. Comfortable funding and I don't know, three hundred or four hundred or, I don't know.
So, this one would be, I mean, the way this spreadsheet works is...
Oh, this is an addition to what's on?
It's in an addition and so there's already a hundred, so, I guess I'm asking what would be the total stormwater contribution? And I don't know if you want to think about it in terms of, uh, how often you want to be able to do a project and, and, you know, you could say, well, if we wanted to do a stormwater project every two years, that'd mean you'd have to put ten hundred thousand in every year, probably, or if you wanted to do it every four years, then that'd be one hundred thousand a year. If you wanted to do one every year, that's four hundred thousand.
So, did we make decisions on this in the last meeting or weren't those decisions?
Uh, well, we had to make a decision about the current stormwater project, I'm talking about future stormwater project.
Well, no, but when we were talking about the budget last time, I, it was my understanding that, that we agreed on those numbers up there as, as being reasonable for the budget and that, that, that it was going to be a deficit that had to come out of the general fund.
Yeah, and so, the, you know, this is for the purposes of, uh, of coming, it was for the purposes of coming up with a proposed property tax increase, but, I mean, just to be clear, nothing is set in stone on this budget until at the end of December when you guys approve it.
See, but, see, but all this, all this stormwater stuff is just match money, okay? So, we don't know how much the grant for the CBA, CIB loan or whatever we get is going to be to begin with and how much of that we're going to have to match.
No, we, we have an idea actually, as a result of having cost opinions on some of the projects that are our storm, storm drain master plan, so when, the last time we talked about it, you know, Bill was here and he's probably the one that's most familiar with those projects and we said, well, how much, Bill, do you think it would take to get another project going? And he said, four hundred thousand.
And that's what is also on the CIB list, I think you all have seen and approved, uh, one is for the Boulder Avenue, uh, system, which we haven't even started, but step one on, and the under is the Jackson Street, Phase Two, which would bring, be a conveyance system down to Petri.
How much, how much did we have to contribute to Jackson Street so far?
So, for our, well, we had to increase it because, uh, so it was, what, two hundred and, let me go in here and see, remind myself.
Um, I wonder, we want to bring up what the Transportation District is considering?
The what?
The Transportation District.
Oh, yeah, uh, one of the things that, the Transportation District covers drainage problems within ride of ways, okay? It has been requested that the Transportation District, especially after we lost all of our mineral lease money, uh, expanded to, to cover drainage issues outside of ride of ways, okay? Like the Jackson Street is a good example, some of these other ones that are actually outside of ride of ways, uh, that need, that need to be addressed and, and we, and we ran that by the Transportation Special Service District at this last meeting, they were favorably, uh, favorable to that, uh, we're going to have a public hearing this next meeting to amend our charter to include drainage issues. Uh, we're gonna have a public hearing this next meeting to amend our charter to include drainage issues outside of ride-of-bays.
So if we can, if you guys get that done, then we can pay for these drainage projects with mineral lease money?
Except for we don't really have any extra mineral lease money.
Well.
I mean, we could, yeah. So that would be a great thing, in my opinion, to, to do. Because, uh, we can't use B road money and we can't use the optional transportation sales tax money for stormwater.
Yeah.
And so that just leaves us with the general fund, which is our most lean fund. Anyway, for Jackson Street to answer your question, Greg, the CIB, uh, gave us two hundred and forty-two thousand, which we had to match. So it was like fifty-fifty there. And, uh, but it ended up costing more than that, so we had to increase our contribution to cover the, the lowest bid coming in, about a hundred fifteen thousand more than, than we were expecting. And so it did end us, end up costing us quite a bit more than we thought. Uh, but, so it goes.
When these, when these developers come in and they wanna do these developments, are we charging them enough for drainage issues?
Well, they have, they're supposedly supposed to engineer their own onsite drainage, which is to say that there's not supposed to be more water coming off their property after they're done than before they started.
Yeah.
Uh, but a lot of the drainage projects that we're talking about are, uh, you know, like Jackson Street where it's coming down from the cliff. And it's not even private property, you know, and we have to get a permit with the VLM to, to do these kind of work. And so it's not necessarily, uh, private property. So for the most part, if it's private property, the developer is supposed to engineer a, an adequate drainage plan and get approval and then they build it themselves. They cover the cost of that. But when it comes to, uh, dealing with stormwater issues that originate, you know, over either lots of different private property or come from public property onto private property, that's the kind of projects that we're talking about, the bigger ones that, and so, um, that's kind of how that works and s, you know, there's some complaints that have rolled in in the past that the county's approved, uh, substandard engineering and, you know, but, uh, I don't, you know, our engineer says that's not true. So, I don't know.
So when will the Jackson Street Phase One be completed?
This year, we hope.
This year?
So, yeah. Anyway, uh, but, you know, it's gonna, it's gonna use up every single dime of, uh, of our stormwater mitigation money and then some. So, uh, if we wanna do another project, then we, it will require all the funding necessary to make a match.
Okay, let's, here's my proposal. Keep the four hundred thousand in. Hope for better times next year.
So four hundred.
Cause that will get us one more project next year.
Three hundred.
Try to.
We'll keep the three hundred plus the one that's already.
Hope, hope for better times.
Um, so four hundred thousand will get us, what project did Bill wanna do, the Phase Two or the Boulder this year?
He said Phase Two.
Uh, probably for next year, probably. I would assume Phase Two, uh, but I don't know.
I thought he said Boulder, but anyways, that'll get us, the three hundred thousand will get us some, that project and an extra hundred to budget for moving forward. Is that what that?
It's, it's four hundred thousand for Phase Two or for Boulder.
So we're trying to decide if we wanna up the four hundred thousand for, for more, which we would pull from fund balance?
One project a year?
Well, I'm fine with the four.
All right, let me go and do that on the other side. All right, let's see how ugly it's getting. So, I mean, without, so right now, without the salary adjustment, we're about ten hundred ninety thousand in the red.
So with, we're about one, what, one point one, one point two?
So, you know, what is the?
At a four point one million dollar fund balance, that drain is down about three million.
Well, it depends on how it all shakes out. There's contingency too, like I say, so.
Depends on better, hope for better times.
Better times.
So, eight, about eight hundred eighty-one thousand total for the general fund for the salary adjustment and the increase in cost of health insurance, um.
Better times in terms of the Transportation District redoing their charter and giving mineral lease money.
City.
That's better times and city.
Well, there's, yeah, there, I mean, there's things that we can pursue to help out. Um, okay, so we got that. Stormwater question answered. Um, are we gonna go ahead with this IT GIS position?
Yeah.
Okay, I can't put that in right now because it requires more work to put in an employee.
Where are we gonna put that employee?
I don't know.
Chris Kaufman talked about, he's like, grim, he's open, he's what he said, but Chris Kaufman can offer space also.
He's got quite a good space there.
Got a couple closets right here.
Another Conex?
Got a cheap pack thousand dollar office.
But that does bring up the point of if, uh, if we would need to tweak Chris's office to fully utilize it. He's got those vaults that he's not really using.
Right, there's space though for you, the vaults. There's space for a person and then there's two vaults where there's.
It's in the vaults.
I told you, I'd buy one of those vaults. I'd pay for your construction.
We need another vault in the, we need another vault. The clerk, our vault is, can't even hardly walk in there.
Vaults aren't bad. You don't close the doors.
So, um, we'll keep that. I haven't done, so the taxiway match for the taxiway project, that's the next question. So that's a minimum of two fifty.
When do we know if we still qualify as the distressed area? Is that December something?
I don't know. It's airport, so.
Probably right at the end of their federal year. I don't, I don't know.
So why don't we, why don't we look at getting those steel plates that Doug was talking about?
Well, like I said, we have to do that. We are gonna do that because we have no choice. Um, but what we're talking about is the, the long-term fix.
Well, yeah.
So we are gonna get those steel plates because we don't have a choice. And that will happen this year, come out of this year's budget. What I'm talking about is the, uh, going for that five million dollar grant and making the match on it, which is either maybe five or ten percent, depending on whether we're considered economically disadvantaged or not.
We aren't, are we?
We are.
We feel like we are, but.
I'll just show my budget.
It's, it's, you're back?
We are back right now. We're back.
Must be right on the edge, huh?
So, I mean, it's obviously, uh, about as good a type of grant scenario as you can get, but it's still, uh, fairly substantial amount of money.
When do we think we'll know about the five million dollar grant?
I think he's gonna, he's been working on it. He's pretty aggressive about that stuff, so I, I'm not sure, but I assume.
First of the year?
First of the year, probably, yeah.
I, I mean, I think it's a no brainer. I think we're gonna get that one.
When, when, when does he think we'll have?
I think this year.
What?
This year, I think he'll know.
This year?
He'll know.
Yeah, I know, I mean.
So I guess, uh.
I guess.
Yeah, let's do that.
We're all.
Hope for better times.
The problem is that we're, you know, we're gonna.
Never gonna live that one down. I wish a good thought process behind it.
Unless, well, I mean, we'll get to that in a second, but. I'll make it as a contribution right now from the general fund.
I thought you were gonna volunteer to make it a contribution for yourself.
Yeah, I wish I had that kind of. I don't know if there is a line item to run to airport. All right, two fifty budgeted for that. Um. So then, I guess what I'd recommend is also to ease the burden here on the general fund. It's, there are, there is a fund balance or there will be a fund balance in the mitigation side of the TRT and the TRCC.
It's a good use for it.
So where that ends up coming out at the, uh, end of this year, I don't know, but uh, we still gotta work on that because we did make some big budget of, you know, we drew off the TRCC might have been this year for budget amendments, but we also increased it, you know?
How much was it increased by?
So the car rental tax, uh, portion almost doubled. You know, virtually doubled. And so the, that portion of it, let me see if I can bring it up. But, uh. So this is, you can see there's the older tax and then the, the newer one. When I, the last time I ran a comparison of the two, uh, the new one was like ninety-three percent of the old one. So.
Didn't that go into effect in April? So that's actually, that includes it here.
Yeah, and I just, I just compared them based on the, on the couple periods that we've collected both of them. So I budgeted, uh, you know, it's not, yeah, so it's, it's about, I'm budgeting it, you know, more or less an extra hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars next year as a result of that change.
Were your two full-time periods at the high level tourist season?
Uh, yeah, probably. Um, April-ish, I, well, I mean, when did you say we first started in April? So, yeah, April and a couple, two or three months after that, so that's, uh, pretty high times for us, I'd say, it's spring. So that's helpful, but, you know, as recall, approve the landslide operations positions out of the TRCC fund, which is about a hundred and twenty-five thousand right there between the two of them. And so, um, it's gonna soak up a lot of that. But anyway, I'd recommend whatever the fund balance is looking like, it's gonna be in the TRCC and TRTT to just pull, pull all that out and send it to eligible departments. And so there's still more money that could go to the airport obviously to cover operations or OSTA or the Grand Center. And in the TRT side, you know, there's more money that could be sent to cover, uh, law enforcement. So this money could all go into offsetting general fund expenditures, which is what I'd recommend doing. There's one other trick I guess we could do also is right now I've got about two hundred and thirty-eight thousand budgeted out of next year's general fund revenue to go to capital projects. But the capital projects fund has six hundred and ninety thousand in it. And so instead of budgeting that two thirty-eight to come out of the revenue, we could budget it to come out of the fund balance.
And how, and that will help? Oh, I see.
So it won't be coming out of, you know, the general funds revenue. So right now, uh, I've got a two hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollar transfer, I believe, coming out of the general fund. Yeah, here we go, two thirty-eight. That would go to zero from the general fund. And then we would just come down to our capital projects fund. And instead of the revenue coming from the general fund, it would come from, uh, the fund balance. So right now, this is the two thirty-eights coming from the general fund. We would switch this over to this other line item below it, which is the draw off the fund balance. So, I mean, we're still spending the money, but it just, um, helps zero out the general fund because we've gotta have, you know, it, the budget that we pass has to, the income and expenses have to sum to zero. And that's one way to do it. Um, you know, this money got put into capital projects with the intent of saving up for operational space needs. Uh, not necessarily like fixing roofs and stuff, but it could be used for that. And so what, I mean, what the result would be is no contribution to capital projects.
This year.
For next year. And just you rely on the fund balance.
I think we, there was a lot of capital projects last year that didn't get approved that we, um, put on hold and I don't really like the idea of putting them on hold again for other.
Well, we're not putting them on hold. We're still doing what Ben requested. We're just paying for it from the fund balance instead of the, the revenue that's coming in.
So you don't have to draw as much from a revenue budget?
So, yeah, I mean, it's the, yeah, it's the capital projects fund, so.
Yeah.
So the end result, and it's hard to do on the fly, but the end result would be that whatever's left over after we transfer all the money out of the TRT and TRCC fund balance and then do that switch with the capital projects, whatever's left over, that's what we'd end up budgeting to come out of the general fund balance. And I'd have to, you know, go, go in and plug a, plug all that stuff in and do all the appropriate uh, revenue and expense side to really know what the balance will end up being, but at, at this point, the really, the only other option besides drawing off the fund balance would be to cut it, cut more expenses. But, uh, it's probably gonna be this number. It's gonna be close probably to, to this number minus two thirty-eight, which isn't too bad, so.
Drawing up the general or the rainy day?
Yeah, and I think, I mean, it will be more than that. This is because, I mean, the real number will be five hundred thousand dollars more than that, but there's probably five hundred thousand in contingency. And so this would, this number right here would be what we would probably actually end up. there's probably five hundred thousand in contingency, and so this would, this number right here would be what we would probably actually end up roughly taking out for real.
So that, I mean, in my mind, that's not, that's still, it's not anywhere near a crisis or a terrible position to be in. It's gonna, you know, diminish our four point one million dollar savings to, you know, three point seven something, but with all things considered, I mean, we've built up that fund, and in some ways I see that as giving us the flexibility, you know, to do those things. That's certainly not something you would wanna come back next year and the year after and be pulling from it, but not raising taxes this year. I mean, so that, like that three hundred thousand, that's the number of the payment that I think the city should be making for the dish payment on the hospital. You know, something I've already started to talk to him about. And so I, I think, like, point being is, is there's money on the table, we focus on that, we can go get it. It doesn't mean we still might not need to, to increase revenue. But it's not like we're taking our savings account, whacking it down by a quarter or a third or a half, you know, we're taking a little bit ahead.
I mean, we decided last night that we weren't gonna increase that revenue, and so I think now we're like, okay, well, how are we gonna pay for it all?
Well, I, I acknowledge that, Evan, but I'm saying, getting to that number, I think, is a good point in clarity, and I'm just, yeah.
I, so, I mean, don't forget that we are drawing off three other fund balances also.
You're zeroing out.
So, you know, you can't, you can't, you're not gonna be able, if you drain this down to zero, you're not gonna be able to do that again until it I mean, this is kind of like accrued slowly over the years where we've, you know, budgeted a little bit less than comes in, and so there's like some carryover and it adds up over the years. But you can't keep doing that, you know, that's, that's quite a bit of money right there that's just one-time money. And, you know, you can't keep drawing this down forever either, and so just remember that we are using quite a lot in, in savings to make up.
Yeah.
Uh, and so we're, we're minimizing the draw of the general fund, but we're doing it by drawing off other fund balances, three other fund balances to get there.
Yeah. How, what, what's been the contribution to those funds? Like, what, what was our contrib, what will be our contribution this year? This fiscal year, say to like TRT?
Uh, well, see, that's, that just depends on how it closes out, you know, again, the reason why money, well, it kind of depends on whether or not you budget to put money in there or not, and I kind of, when I was on the council, stopped budgeting to put money into there because I don't see any reason for there to be money in there, and so it ends up being whatever we collect that we weren't anticipating, and so they're kind of asking me to say, how much am I not anticipating?
Well, but now you're, but now you're saying two different things. You're saying we, we're drawing from fund balances that don't need to have balances, and we can't do that over and over, and then now you're just saying that there's no reason to have fund balances in those accounts anyways.
No, there isn't, but I'm just telling you.
So what's the point?
The point is you can't do it every year.
I understand that.
That's on my point.
What you're saying is it took a long time to build those balances that we're using this year.
We won't have the same amount next year.
And so next year you may have ten thousand dollars in there, um, so you can't count on a repeat of. Having that flexibility.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I get that.
Yeah, so, yeah, I mean, that's my point, is that if we're making ends meet on, you know, predominantly ongoing operational costs using one-time money, then, uh,
Yeah.
you just have to realize that.
That number's bigger than that three hundred and some thousand.
And so next year, when we look in what's gonna end up in those accounts, it's gonna not be very much because it'll just be, you know, whatever little bit comes in, if any, that, uh, is more than what we budgeted or projected. And, uh, you know, like those figures that we're looking at, they, they accrued over the years, and so I'm just saying that when it really gets down to budgeting next year, it's, it's gonna be harder uh, because we don't, we won't have as much money in the bank to draw off of, um, you know, we'll be getting to the point where, um, you know, this money won't be available, and you could keep drawing this down and keep drawing this down, but, um, you're gonna start to erode the, the money that was put aside for operational space. And, you know, I'm probably the only one that, you know, is sitting at the table here that remembers what it was like to do budgeting when you had less than a million dollars in the fund balance, and, um, you were literally like on the verge of going broke every year.
Yeah.
Um, and so it's a considerably more comfortable position, I'll tell you, that you're in right now with that fund balance, and drawing it down again, you know, will put the county in a bad way, and budgeting gets much, much harder uh, when you're, when you get to the point where you really don't have wiggle room. You lose your contingency, and you also, you know, put your, put the county in position where even, you know, some minor recession could really cause major problems.
So we don't wanna do it more than this year?
You know, and I, like I said, that fund balance, it exists for a number of reasons, you know, partly cash flow, partly contingency, and partly just, you know, insurance against some kind of economic recession.
So the total of the fund balances that were zero, zeroing out aside from the, um, the draw from the general fund balances, that TRT and TRCC?
And then drawing the two thirty, drawing, drawing two thirty-eight off of this, this one too.
So that's like seven hundred and some thousand, so that's, yeah, about, what did we say, one point one million? Is that number, the total deficit before we make those draws?
Yeah, I mean, it's changing, it's changed just in this meeting considerably, so before I would give accurate numbers of, you know, I haven't plugged the seventy-five thousand in yet for the one position. And so, right now, we're looking at, without that seventy-five, a deficit of five thirty-nine, five hundred and thirty-nine thousand. When you add eight hundred and eighty-one thousand to that for the salary, so another seventy-five for that IT GIS position. And, uh.
Million four ninety-five.
So quite a bit about, you know, eh, but like I said, the, uh, there is contingency.
Yeah.
But, um, I need to, you know, to really give accurate numbers, I need to keep on refining. I need to make sure that I got everything entered in that we're talking about, uh, right, and then keep on refining the budget.
What would be like an average? You know, since we've seen like TRT really take off of, of what we end up? What would that number be in your mind, what we end up putting back to that, that, you know, margin? Three hundred thousand, four hundred thousand?
Took a different approach than Diana and.
Yeah, she didn't really budget for growth.
Well, we did. We always budgeted for growth, but, um, a little more conservatively, so in twenty thirteen, the budget was thirteen or one, one million three oh eight, probably one million three forty-five. And then twenty fourteen, one million four fifty-nine, so it, it was fairly conservative in the past, um, but I didn't really take as conservative approach, I don't think.
Yeah.
Because I wanted to get a more clear understanding of, um, of where, what kind of money we really had to work with, because I knew we were gonna need every little bit of it.
Yeah.
Um, so in terms of trying to estimate really what what, you know, the, how conservative I am, it's a little difficult. I've got, I can pull up all the projections that I did if you want, you know, and I did some, uh, trend analysis, and, uh, use that to come up with my numbers for projections, and I didn't really bump them down much from the trend projection, you know, there wasn't a lot of conservative, uh, normally, you know, we would do our projection and then bump it down a percent or two, but I just sort of ran the projection and used that projection. Let me see if I, I mean, I try to see if I can bring it up, got a thousand different.
Well, he's doing that, let me toss this out. I'm trying to walk the fine line between bad times and better times. I don't know. Um, I'm trying to walk the fine line between not drawing too much on the general fund this next year and leaving, um, money in capital projects. Two hundred and thirty-eight thousand was budgeted to go into capital projects. I'm wondering if we could budget a hundred thousand to go in there and the other two, one hundred and thirty-eight to be drawn off the general fund balance because we know we've got capital, we've got facilities needs. We don't know exactly what they are yet, but I just hate to not plan for that. So what's everybody's thoughts on that? Did I state that clearly or not?
I don't know, I'm, I think I'm looking at things a lot differently than, you know, some of the council members as far as we've gotta be willing to go to these districts that we're liaisons to and carry a message of it's time to sharpen the pencils. And the other thing that we've gotta do that I think frankly that we've really lacked the, the urgency and commitment to is to get some of this property sold that we've talked about selling. And, you know, that's one-time stuff, but we've already pretty much earmarked that, you know, for capital improvements, and so I, I don't, I don't look at it as if we're not budgeting um, money this year that puts us in a deficit, deficit that it's, that that's lacking commitment or follow-through, but there are things out there that need to be taken action on that will connect the dots on these things. And we've gotta be able to, to do that instead of just leaving them kind of floating out there as loose ends. So I guess I would disagree that, that we're not planning for that, it's just not, we have the assets, they're just not, you know, it's, it's not revenue. But does an extra hundred and thirty-eight thousand or whatever that figure was added to the deficit this year, does that really move the needle in the grand scheme of things? I guess, you know, I guess there's a conversation to be had there. I mean, if we don't sharpen our pencils and we don't, you know, get some of that property sold for the capital improvements, the, the amount that we're gonna have to go back to the taxpayers for, for a tax increase is gonna be much larger than it would be if we make some of these things happen. I'm not, I don't think it's, I don't think it's, uh, I think it's inevitable for us to grow revenue by, you know, a, a tax increase, but just how much, um, I think is, is what's still to be determined, and a lot of that depends on the action of the council.
Any other thoughts?
Um, just with the, the talk of, you know, keeping the property sales in the equation, um, you know, I think when we get this needs assessment back that we're all expecting that we're gonna need more space, and I kinda see that, um, property sales going to help ease that or fund that as a one-time sort of thing. Um, and in the meantime, we still have roofs that need fixed and other offices for this year to get tackled together. Tim's garage lean-to thing at the weed department, a bunch of other capital stuff that is gonna need addressing. Well, I guess my response, I mean, Jalen, is that, uh, the general fund balance and the cap, general funds, capital projects balance, I mean, they're basically the same money, they have the same restrictions. I mean, it doesn't necessarily matter whether you leave it in the general fund balance or you know, it's, it's the same money and you can make the transfer whenever you're ready, so the, the important thing is in capital projects, in whatever year we decide that we're going to say, alright, we're gonna go for new office space or whatever, that's when we have to make sure that the money is in the capital projects fund for you to, to cover it. And so, um, you know, I don't expect that we'll be able to build new office space next year, but if we uh, can, can bring in enough revenue from selling surplus property next year, then maybe the year after that, we really would be like, alright, maybe we do have enough money and we're gonna transfer that money over, you know, into the, into the capital projects fund to make it happen. But until you get to the point where you're ready to make the expenditure, I don't know that it matters whether it, that money's in one fund balance or another.
The same.
It's got the same restrictions on it. But, I don't know, I mean, for the purposes of just kind of giving some sketch, I mean, I've done quite a bit of analytics to kind of come up with the projections for all the different sales and use taxes, TRT, and all the others, um. And so, like I say, I ran, you know, projections, and I really didn't knock those projections down, I just used them straight across to plug into the budget, so I think that, uh, I'm being less conservative than we have been in the past, which probably means that less money's gonna end up rolling over into those fund balances. But, um, yeah, TRT has become fairly significant, uh, projecting for twenty nineteen over six million. And it.
How much of that goes to the city? Or is that, is that correct?
None, that's all ours, and so, um, the city has their own, and they collect that. And theirs is, uh, one percent or one and a quarter or something like that, so it's less, but theirs is totally unrestricted, they can just, uh, put it right in their general fund. We can't do that unfortunately, but uh, so that's, you know, more than double what we're gonna bring in from, uh, our general operations property tax line. And as you saw maybe in the, uh, audit, um, last night, TRT for the first time in twenty seventeen actually exceeded total property tax collections, and so it's, it is our singular greatest revenue stream. However, you know, only, really only fifty-two percent of that could be used for funding operations outside.
That's ridiculous to have that much money going down for auction. When we're promoted out of, out of the water, it's an ass.
What was the, sorry, what was the, what was the, the travel council's cut or the promotional cut?
They have forty-eight percent.
About forty-eight.
Of what was the total amount?
Uh, let me go look here, so. So for the travel council, two point, for twenty nineteen, I'm budgeting uh, two million eight hundred and fifty-one thousand.
Speaking of the middle.
Yep.
Scared him away, teacher.
It was quick.
Did you see that? He caught up.
It was either that or that discussion about TRT.
I think there's other places we could get more money. We wanted to go to the rental business, I just think. We need to go after all the rentals if we're gonna start charging, you know, we charge jeans, why don't we charge everybody else?
Rentals pay.
We do.
Pay transient rent tax?
Do mountain bikes pay TRT? When you rent a mountain bike?
Well, it's car rental.
I know, that's what I'm saying. We need to go after rentals. We need to go after tubes, we need to go after all of them, I guess.
You'd have to change.
How are we gonna pay for the mountain bike trials to be completed? I mean, we're putting seventy-five thousand dollars in there.
We'll have to work with the state to do that. And that's worth doing. That's certainly worth looking at, but they're hard to move. That's certainly worth looking at, but they're hard to move.
All right, so anyway, I just want to recap, make sure, so I think we're all in agreement to draw the fund balances off the TRT and the DRCC. And to, instead of pulling, uh, the money for next year's capital projects from the general fund, we'll pull it out of the fund balance of capital projects itself. And, um, then whatever remains will be what we budget to come out of the general fund balance. That. And then we agreed to add the two hundred and fifty thousand for the taxiway match and seventy-five thousand for IT, increase the stored water from one hundred thousand to four hundred thousand. And so with that, I mean, we're going to be pretty dang close. There's still, you know, just minor details left and ironing out, uh, the budget, but should be, uh, ready to present it by November first, which is my deadline. And then, you know, you've got more time to, you know, if there's anything significant to make changes to, uh, the, ideally, uh, we want to have the budget pretty much settled ten days prior to the public hearing because that's when you have to put the budget out to the public.
And we're going to do that this year, huh?
You didn't, well, you, you have to do it, you have to do it every year, don't you?
It wasn't on the, it wasn't up when we had the public hearing, huh?
You didn't have the budget out?
It wasn't accessible to the public.
Well, I mean, the.
So I'm very happy it's not going to be like that this year.
The law just says that it has to be available in the clerk's office for anybody who wants to look at it. Um, but of course we'll publish it, you know, we just make it to a PDF. But, um, so, uh, I guess, let me see what's on the agenda here so I can make sure I'm not skipping anything.
Chris, the law says, just real quick, the law says it's supposed to be, um, posted up at the county, I think, a, a minimum on a monthly basis, too.
Oh, well, there's also requirements for, um, I think, uh, quarterly financial reports.
Yeah.
That haven't necessarily been.
Met.
Done, but you know, with this new software, you can put out a financial report anytime you want. You know, anytime somebody asks, we can, uh, produce a report on all of our expenses against the budget year-to-date, revenue and, and everything. So, uh, start, you know, definitely doing that next year, uh, you know, whatever interval the council wants to see.
This is October ninth.
Oh, sorry.
I'm going, I, this is.
My brain is, yeah, I'm still kind of sick, so I feel like my head's full of blood. But, um, so, and some of these, it looks like, you know, we've already talked about engaging in learnings for cost sharing, allow for new growth and parrot tax values. So we can't actually budget for new growth, but we can kind of, we take into account that there will be some, um, in, you know, how we think about things. Oh, yeah, and then review the fund balance of designated funds. Pretty sure that, well, the city just, uh, requested their five hundred and twenty-five thousand for USU. So.
That's, uh, I closed in yesterday.
That's probably out the door.
Cool. Yesterday.
And they, yeah, they closed on it.
They did?
Yep. Yesterday afternoon.
Didn't they have another coun, I thought, did they schedule another city council meeting to, because it was tabled?
They voted at their last meeting just a week ago to go ahead and fund the contractor select. They selected, they approved the contractor. Yeah, they did.
Okay.
I meant to mention that in my council report. You did, I thought. I didn't say that they funded the contractor. No, you did, yeah, that's right. You just said that.
So that five twenty-five has been rolling over ever since we, uh, put that money together. And so I need to go in and change it, uh, take it out of the budget for next year still because it got expended this year. Uh, so that will go in, be zero. One, I guess one thing to talk about that Ruth and I kind of discussed, but I did increase the budget for the fireworks from seventeen thousand to twenty-seven thousand, which was roughly in line with the kind of responses we were seeing. Uh, and I did ask, uh, both the rec district and the city, um, to consider continuing to split that a third each.
Do the rec district have that money?
Well, they're probably going to be like, no, we don't have the money. You took away our money, so we're going to take away. I don't know.
They paid for it each year, huh? But do they?
I mean, as long as we've been voiced it, I don't know.
So we'll see, you know, if they, like, you know, you can't dictate that the city or the rec district pays that money really at all. I don't think we have an agreement about it. It's all just a handshake kind of thing. Um, there's other minor ones in here that are not really necessarily worth going over, but the trail maintenance, um, right now, the, the money that we save up for trail maintenance is ending up in this designated funds. And that's the, the money that we set aside for paved path maintenance. And we established a schedule, uh, which is roughly around a hundred thousand a year that we save up, uh, that's based on a schedule of maintenance for crack sealing and seal codes and all the different things that we expect to happen. And so that's, that's where this money right now is, is ending up. But I think that, uh, if we create a new fund that will have the Trail Mix employees in it, that we should probably take the money out of this designated fund and move it, transfer it over to the, to the fund that has the Trail Mix employees. And I think that it probably makes sense to, you know, for looking into the future to call that fund that, you know, the Parks Trails and Recreation Fund as opposed to just calling it Trail Mix so that it, um, can encapsulate, you know, more, uh, than just trail work into the future. Um, you know, there's some other, like, like I say, some donations come in. This could be, uh, a place potentially where we could receive also donations for, um.
The cleanup?
You know, junk cleanup or whatever. But this fund is kind of the one where if you want money not to just to get, to disappear at the end of the year, but you want it to sort of roll over, you know, this is the, the funds that we set up where you want to save something up over, over time. That's not necessarily a capital project type of thing. And this is, uh, where we establish accounts for that. And so, but the way that it works in fund accounting is you have to bring the money in every year and then budget to spend it all every year and bring it back in the next year and budget to spend it all again the next year. And it just keeps on going like that until you, you know, either spend it all or whatever. You just have to remember in fund accounting, you always have to do the accounting for both the revenue and the expense. But, yeah, the main chunk of money was in that USU set aside and also in, uh, trail maintenance expense.
Chris, uh, do you know if the trail maintenance expense includes the inspections of those elevated bridges?
I don't know.
That's also on the schedule?
Is it? They may, you guys may have added that to the schedule since I last saw it, maybe. And I don't know, I haven't seen that schedule for a while, so probably, have you got that or who has that? Who's the keeper of that?
Zach Ryan's office, he inherited it, so I'll, I'll check on that.
So I'll check with Zach Ryan, see. I don't even know if we're putting enough money in to cover that schedule or not because I haven't seen it. All right, so as far as future considerations go, you know, what else? Does the council want to go over with regard to the budget before we, the budget advisory board passes it on to the council? I mean, are there really any other big concerns? I mean, there's still nitty-gritty details to, to work out, but most of them just are, like I say, the guy to do family support center, we got to do the, and shore up some grant, grant stuff like with the weed department, but none of that is, I mean, I assume that's the stuff that the council doesn't want to have to deal with and that's why they created the budget advisory board. So I don't know if the council feels like they need another meeting this month or not. That's I guess why.
I don't. I, I.
That's because it's really good.
Happy where we're at, you know, just even in the last forty-five minutes being able to look at, you know, um, the fund balances and kind of how we're steering into the budget process, there, there's not really any, you know, deep dives that I feel like, you know, are really necessary other than just those specific areas where changes are being made like IT, but I'm comfortable.
Yeah, I think we've really covered all the big issues. We covered salary adjustments, you know, we covered, um, capital projects and, uh, just all the big questions I think that the council really needs to answer, so.
Chris, were all the other positions included in the various funds? Like this part-time social media person in travel council?
Oh, um, I haven't plugged that into the travel council yet, but I will.
But there were a list up there, I don't remember.
So the ones, the ones that, um, I haven't plugged in aren't going to affect the general fund.
So where's amazing?
The ones that I haven't plugged in aren't going to affect the general fund. So we did plan, we are planning to, um, bring the Thompson Welcome Center into the county and I think I discussed this at a prior meeting. It's entirely funded by a state contract and so that won't affect any component of the budget. And Trail Mix, we discussed, uh, to be paid for out of the optional transportation sales tax, which there is, that money is available, um, and, uh, won't impact our ability to fund the salary adjustments in the V-roads. We already squared away the jail, uh, two, at least two of the jail physicians and then there's two new dispatch positions that state code is going to require. And so I guess the council is still going to have to approve those positions. Job description already exists, but, um, I don't think we really have, uh, an option on that, but I did plug those into the budget already. I haven't plugged in that seventy-five thousand for the ITGIS, but we talked about that, so that still has to be done. So I think that covers it. There are some that haven't been plugged in, but they don't affect the general fund and they, uh, we already discussed where the money's going to come from. But what I want to do, you know, when I present to the council, will just give a executive summary, not only for the council but for the public, try to make it a little more understandable, you know? So if everyone's good with that, you know, just, uh, next time we discuss, discuss the budget will be, maybe we, you know, we'll discuss it in an actual council meeting, uh, in November, beginning of November.
Did you want to have a tentative budget adopted before November first?
Um, I don't really know. I, I mean, when I read state code, it sounds like there's, I'll have to, you know, make sure, but there is a, in the past, you know, we've adopt, you know, adopted a tentative budget, but I don't actually see the required requirement for that in code. What I see is that the budget officer has to provide the legislative body with a tentative budget by November first and it doesn't say anything about doing it in a meeting.
Right.
I suppose I just come down and slap it down on the desk and say, there you go. But, um, you know, I would prefer, I guess, you know, as, I mean, I've, we're already doing it right now. I'm presenting the tentative budget to the council, but, um.
The reason why that's in there like that, I read through all that last year, is to make sure that the budget officer is, is enabling the legislative body to adopt a budget when the time comes.
Yep.
Um, we did last night, just talking about future meetings, last night we postponed that one item from Diana suggested, we postponed that one item and we postponed it to the twenty-fourth.
What's that?
Reclamation.
Oh, BOE.
I think she has to have it before the, the November second council meeting this month.
So we have obligated ourselves to meet for even a, a little bit next Thursday. You know, we thought we were going to have a meeting, so we said, well, would you register it the twenty-fourth? She said she had to have it before the seventh.
I'm not going to be able to be there.
Well, yeah, I mean.
So we don't have to have a budget, uh, a, a joint meeting, but we are going to have to meet at some point on the twenty-fourth.
So, yeah, we'll, um, we'll see. You know, like I say, Ruth, I mean, I know that we've adopted a tentative budget in the past, but I don't know if that's necessarily like required by law. I didn't see it in the law, but all I saw was that budget officer has to provide a tentative budget to the legislative body. Legislative body has to make that tentative budget available for public review and the clerk also auditor or budget officer, whoever, make it available ten days prior to the public hearing, which will be December fourth. And then the next meeting in December is when we're, we would, uh, you know, the second meeting in December would be when it would be approved.
Why don't we just put it in a packet for a discussion item? I mean, that would be a formal way to present the budget without it having to be adopted. I, I agree with what you're saying, Chris, but that would be a more formal way to acknowledge that it's been presented to us as opposed to, or it could be done in a presentation on the agenda by the budget officer.
Yeah. Well, I mean, technically I have to provide it by November first, so.
Oh, I see.
Uh, but in terms of presenting it in a meeting, I, I think that it could probably be done first meeting in November.
Yeah.
Like, I would just email it to you all or whatever on, on, uh, November first and that would be me providing it. And then we, uh, could have it be on the next council agenda. And, uh, and that's when I would, you know, give a more narrative interpretation of it because we, we, we have to take all this out of advantage. You know, you export the whole thing into an Excel file and upload it into Casell and then when it gets spit out, it's going to look like just a giant pile of numbers. It's not going to be anything that anybody will be able to understand without some narrative. And so, so that's, um, that's why I want to, not only for, you know, the council but also the public to be able to go over it, executive summary style, you know? But I also have to get to work on making the twenty eighteen modified budget. Um, and I've already started that process, but, uh, I want to wrap this up as soon as possible so that I can get to work on that because that's the one that actually gets audited. Your year-end final modified budget is the one that the auditor's going to look at and say, you know, that's the one that kind of matters as far as the audit goes and so, um.
Remember to the, the budget board, I guess, would need to look at that family support budget that you postponed, so I mean, that's trivial.
I mean, they could or they, if, if they want to, I mean, or you could just, you know, say, do it. I mean, it's, it's just going to be what it is.
It's mostly just grant. I mean, it seems like we might have to supplement a little bit out of the general fund for the pay increases.
We used to, uh, well, we already have, I mean, that's how we covered the fourteen dollar an hour thing is with a contribution from the county. Um, and I still have to talk with Diana more about flushing that out. She seems to think that they'd be okay for next year even though they're losing their tentative grant, but after that, not next year, but the year after that. that, then they come down to the county, starting to make contributions, greater contributions to that, and they used to before they got the tentative grant, but, you know, that tentative grant was supposed to be, you know, sort of a leg up to where they would find other revenue, but they, as far as I know, they haven't.
One other thing I have for council adoption is the employee pay plan with the, I don't know if it was the position pay plan that you wanted, the correct titles and all that?
Yeah, and that all, so.
That's in the regular council.
Well, uh, what I would recommend is that the budget, you know, whenever we approve the budget, after you approve the budget, then you approve the employee and position pay plans in the last meeting in December, because technically, you can't really, you can't spend money or, or appropriate money without a budget, so you have to approve the budget first and then approve the pay plans. You can't do it the other way around, or you shouldn't really anyway. And so, that will be tagged on to the end. Also, approve the budget, then approve the pay plans that go within, and, uh, so that's kind of my, uh, strategy, I guess, for that.
So, it sounds like the, um, hearing officer postponed an item is the only thing, you know, you, both boards are set up for electronic meetings, we could have, you guys could call in and make it happen. That's really County Council, so just a form. No, you don't have to, yeah, the County Council does require a form in person, I forgot about that.
Yeah, I know, too, so we don't have to have it at eight-thirty though.
Anybody ever talked about changing that policy?
We hasn't come out, though.
We could, it'd be nice to change it.
Maybe, like, you could write it in just for, like.
Special meetings, not for, not, maybe not for the regular meeting, for the regular meeting, keep it a form present, but maybe if you have special meetings, you could have.
Well, you always have the option to suspend rules, but then I guess you'd have to, but I guess you would have to have a supermajority to do that.
But I just thought, Chris said we didn't need to have one.
Sorry, I meant, uh.
No, but we're going to be here anyway.
Council doesn't need to have.
Oh, so you guys don't already be here?
We're meeting next week anyway, right?
Well, if we have to, like I say, I mean, I guess that's a question for the Budget Advisory Board, too. Are there remaining things that need to be dealt with, like Family Support Center? Do you have to see that, or do you want me just to do it?
Just give it an email, I'd enjoy it. Be interested in it, but we don't have to meet. I guess the next thing I'd be interested in as Budget Advisory Board is just what you're talking about, presenting to the council the budget, and I'm curious about two thousand and eighteen, and it sounds like that's not going to be wrapped up till closer to the end of the year.
Yeah, so, I mean, it would be nice to have as much time as possible to work on that and other things, too. Um, I'm supposed to be training to learn how to be clerk auditor also.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, that's why there is that. If I can, you know, if we can drop off some meetings, that would help me if they're not necessary.
Yeah, if you don't, if you don't need to meet, I wouldn't.
I would be. We, we can figure out how we have, we have, we did postpone that one agenda item thinking we were going to be meeting, but we can suspend the rules.
Well, the, you could if you had a supermajority, but you won't have a supermajority, because you won't have, uh, if you already don't have a quorum, then you won't have a supermajority.
Right now, it's not an action item, so we can't do it right now, anyway. So, can there be a quorum here next week, whatever time, so that we can vote on the postponed item and just make it a very short meeting? Yeah, five minutes.
I can be here.
Okay, I can be here. Evan can be.
Twenty-fourth, yeah, I was already planning on.
So, we've got a quorum, you can call in.
You're talking about the postponed item for the hearing officer?
Right.
We also did today postpone the.
Would it be possible to knock that thing out, like, first thing? At what time? Like, eight o'clock or something?
When could you be there?
Well, I can't, but I can call.
Well, I, if, if that's the only thing on the item, we just have to decide what time, and it should take more than five, ten minutes, right?
Can you do eight-thirty? That's when we usually. Yeah.
Let's just keep it at eight-thirty.
Eight-thirty it is. So, I mean, what I'm talking about is to be clear.
Drive in.
Is, is to say that.
If you're driving in, that's fine, but if you wouldn't have to drive in for five minutes, you could just call.
Budget Advisory Board is done.
Today?
Until next, uh.
Year.
Well, we started January one.
Thank you, Advisory Board, you guys have been amazing.
I want them off the hook that quick.
That is so.
No, I'm just, I'm just, I mean, we might have to, uh, it's possible that we might have to meet, but I'm just saying that I think that there's nothing really left that requires any, like, decision-making. Uh, the rest of the budget that needs to be filled in is just what it is. It is what it is. I just have to figure out what it is, and so I think we've answered all the big questions, and I'm going to be, you know, ready by November first to present the budget to the council, and so, um, I would say that. We can resume the Budget Advisory Board, um, you know, when we're ready to start working on, um, some things, like maybe the internal control, but it sounds to me like the internal control, like auditing function, isn't going to work in the Budget Advisory Board anyway, so I think that's going to have to be a separate process anyway.
So, next week's meeting will not be a FAB meeting, so you're excused, but, so it will turn into a special meeting of the County Council.
We don't, we don't need some kind of action item around that. That feels so unceremonious. It's like, that's it, we're not, we don't have to, like, vote to be done, and vote to, like, send this on.
We're not really done, we're just done for now.
And so, we're only saying eight-thirty because selfishly, Evan and I have already planned on being here next week at eight-thirty. And you guys. So, let's just do eight-thirty next week, special County Council meeting. I do have one future consideration.
So, we don't need Zach next week? I don't need to be here?
You're done.
What?
We got to next year, we need to have some.
He loves the ceremony, too.
I like this. Chris did a great job. I think it's great that we have this board and can communicate and talk about everything and get through the process better, and I just thank Chris for what he's done.
And you've got another, you're on the board, right?
Oh, absolutely, yes, absolutely.
Yes, thank you for your service.
Yes, exactly.
This has been great. This has been nice.
And it's been reassuring to have citizens here that, you know, aren't connected to the county in that way.
Yeah. I mean, I've been waiting on much, but maybe next year I'll chime in a little bit more for everybody. Well, this might make you look around at some of these things, you don't notice things about the county that you didn't before?
Oh, of course.
Oh. Well, in light of the audit last night and the, the finding about overspending in certain, um, certain departments, and this is, this is not new, I've been wanting this for my entire four years on the council, and I've never made any headway in getting it, but I suspect we can do this. Now, I really would like some sort of a counting, and it's up to the council how often you'd like it, but I would like some sort of a, I don't know if you call it profit and loss balance sheet, that shows expenditures to date and budget year to date, at least once a quarter, if not once a month.
That's what's supposed to be posted.
And just in, it doesn't have to be in, you know, detailed line items, just in the big major funds and departments, so that we have an idea of where we're at.
So, yeah, I, that, I mean, technically, it's supposed to be done once a quarter, I think.
Yeah, that's exactly what's supposed to be posted.
It's a form of government. So, let's make that happen.
State code, so.
It'd be nice to have minutes.
Yeah, and so, the other thing.
Minutes would be nice.
And we could, I don't know, you know, we talked about it, but there was some confusion, you know, on how we drafted our policies with regard to the minutes, which is, I think, why we ended up with that finding, um, but technically, it's the legislative body's responsibility to post the minutes to the public notice website, and I think we figured that out, but.
We don't get the minutes to post.
Well, the law doesn't, the, the finding didn't have anything to do with, uh, the minutes being drafted late.
Right.
They had to do with after they were approved.
Right.
They weren't being put on the public notice website. They were making it on our website, but our website doesn't count.
Oh, you mean, okay.
So, what was happening is that they were getting on our website, but that doesn't comply with the law. It has to go to the state's public notice website, but I think Ruth and I already fixed that, didn't we?
Yeah, it's fixed. That was a two thousand and seventeen one.
Yeah, and so, that shouldn't be a problem for our next audit, we have that covered.
I thought you, well, did we just, oh, never mind.
I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll say.
All in favor?
Fifty minutes early.
That's nice. All right, I'm not complaining.
Yay, way to go, team.
Oh, thanks, Zach.
Thank you, everybody. Till next year, I guess.
All right.
That's where the fun starts.
How's the hunt for the new CFO or whatever? Still shopping around.
Yeah.
Still shopping around. I got a new physician now, so now I'm the director of revenue cycle, so now I'm over medical records.
medical records.